Good morning, good morning. Praise the Lord. This is a beautiful blessed day today because the Lord has allowed the sun to yet shine. The birds are chirping. I know you will hear me say that. But in living and in living for God, it's a small thing that bless us the most. So I don't know about you, but I am glad that He woke me up this morning. I am so glad that He has started me on my way. Let us look this morning. We are in the book of Psalms. We are covering today Psalm 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Father, this morning I stretch my hands to thee. There is no other help, I know. If thou withdraw thyself from us, Lord, where shall we go? We thank you, Lord, for being our friend. We thank you, Father God, for being... For some of us, when our fathers and our mothers have gone on, you have been there for us. So God, we thank you for being our everything. Now, God, as we go to your word to study, to show ourselves approved unto you, a workman meaning not be ashamed, but rightly dividing the word of truth. We ask God that you open our mind, that you help us to retain that which we are learning. Father, it is in Jesus' name that we pray with thanksgiving. And those who believe joined me and said, "Amen." Amen. This morning, as we look and begin, because we have several books that we're going to cover, we're going to jump right into it. Psalm 11. In the Lord put I my trust. How say ye to my soul, flee as a bird to your mountain? For lo, the wicked bend their bow. They make ready their arrow upon the string that they might privily shoot at the upright in the heart. If the foundations be destroyed, what can the righteous do? The Lord is in his holy temple. The Lord's throne is in heaven. His eyes behold, his eyelids try the children of men. The Lord tryeth the righteous, but the wicked and him that loveth violence, his soul hated. Upon the wicked he shall rain snares, fire and brimstone, and an horrible tempest. This shall be the portion of their cup. Verse 7. For the righteous lord loveth righteousness; his countenance doth behold the upright. What this is saying to us this morning in Psalm 11? This is David's struggle with triumph over a strong temptation to distrust God and betake himself to indirect means of his own safety in time of danger. Those who truly fear God and serve Him are welcome to put their trust in Him. Does he not tell us over and over again, Proverbs 3:5 and 6, "Trust in the Lord with all thine heart; lean not on thine own understanding, but in all thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct their path?" Tells us in Psalm 37 to trust in the Lord and do good. So he tells us and lets us know that we should put our trust in God. The psalmist, before he gives an account of this, records his resolution to trust in Him as that which he is resolved to live and to die. You see, the believer, though not terrified by his enemies, may be tempted by the fears of his friends to desert his post or neglect his work. It's easy to not trust. It's easy to lose sight. It's easy to not stay focused. That's why, beloved, as we grow in the grace of God and in His knowledge, it is very beneficial that we then begin to associate ourselves with people of likeness, which means people who also love God, who also are seeking Him while He might yet be found. We have to sometimes change some of our friends because we don't want to be distracted by those who are non-believers. So we are to make sure that we are trying to fellowship with other believers. We learned in this 11th chapter that he is a righteous judge and will therefore punish those that are not doing his will. And as we are learning that, we learn that God, He cannot err, that God is not a man that he should lie. So it says that, "For the righteous lord loveth righteousness; his countenance doth behold the upright." Help... does behold the upright. Psalm 12. Help, Lord! For the godly man sees it; for the faithful fail from among the children of men. They speak vanity; everyone with his neighbor with flattering lips and with a double heart do they speak. The Lord shall cut off all flattering lips and the tongue that speaketh proud things. Who has said, "With our tongue will we prevail?" Our lips are our own. Who is Lord over us? For the oppression of the poor, for the signing of the needy, now will I arise, said the Lord. I will set him in safety for him that huffeth at him. The words of the Lord are pure words. Thank you, Lord. As silver tried in a furnace of earth, purified seven times. Thou shalt keep them, O Lord; thou shalt preserve them from this generation forever. The wicked walk on every side when the vilest men are exalted. When I look at this, I know that the psalmist here is begging help from God because there are none among men who he can trust. Amen? This verse, this chapter goes back to the former chapter, Psalm 11, letting us know that, you know, they talked about trust then. Then he follows up again and he talks about trust again. So he says, "Who can I trust?" You know? "I can get cut off," verse 3 says, "from all the flattering lips and the tongue that speaketh proud things. Who has said, 'With our tongue we will prevail?' Our lips are our own. Who is Lord over us?" It's looking at this because he knows that there is none among men who he can really, really trust. The psalmist here is furnishing good thoughts for bad times. Good thoughts for bad times. You're gonna need a pencil in just a moment. It says that a man may comfort himself with such meditations and prayers. So it says, "What makes bad times bad?" What makes bad times bad? And it tells us, the people feel that, is it scarcity of money? Is it decay of the trade or the profession? Is it the desolations of war and rumors of war? Are these the things that make time bad? Well, if we look at our scriptures, this is what the scripture says that makes time bad. Will you write down 2 Timothy 3 and 1? 2 Timothy 3 and 1 alludes to bad times. 2 Timothy 3 and 1 starts out by saying, "This know also, that in the last days perilous times shall come; for men shall be lovers of their own self: covetous, boasters, proud, blasphemers, disobedient to parents..." Lord, have mercy. "...unthankful, unholy, without natural affection; truce-breakers, false accusers, incontinent, fierce, despisers of those that are good; traitors, heady, high-minded, lovers of pleasures more than lovers of God." Having, verse 5 says, "Having a form of godliness, but denying the power thereof, from such turn away." I don't know if you remember back in March, the Lord gave me that message to bring to all of you. If you ever want to hear it, you need to pull that message up about perilous times because I explained each of those. But this is saying, these are the bad times. These are the times that the Lord refers to as bad. And if you stop and look at each one of those 18 points, you will find out that many of them are transpiring and have already come to pass. Amen? So these are what God refers to as bad times. Well, what do we do, Pastor Smith, when we are confronted with these bad times? I'm so glad you asked. I want you to write down today number one. The question again is, what do I do in bad times? I want you to know that you have a God that you can go to. In these bad times, you're not alone, beloved. Friends might disappoint you. Friends might let you down. But we have a God who will not let us down. You can go to God where you can't go to anybody else. Number two, know that God will punish and restrain false and proud men. Amen? It's not for us to judge. It's not for us to criticize anyone. It's not for us to talk about, badly about anyone. But we know we have to have the blessed assurance of knowing that during bad times, God will punish and restrain false and proud men. And number three, we need to know that God will work deliverance. God will work deliverance for his oppressed people. Kings told us when we studied the book of Kings, Mark, that God sees our tears. God hears our prayers. So because he doesn't answer as soon as we ask the prayer or ask for whatever it is we're asking for, he still sees and he still hears. And in his time, he will work deliverance for his oppressed people. I need us to know that all of God's people are put in the hands of Christ, our Savior. That's why he sent his son, Jesus, to die for our sins. That's why we can know that we are safe in the arms of Jesus, that we can lean upon him like a rock. Because when we lean upon him as a rock, we know that he, that we will be safe. Let's look at Psalm 13. Psalm 13 says, "How long will thou forget me, O Lord?" Forever? "How long will thou hide thy face from me?" "How long shall I hate counsel in my soul, having sorrow in my heart daily? How long shall mine enemy be exalted over me? Consider and hear me, O Lord, my God; lighten my eyes lest I sleep, the sleep of death; lest my enemy say, 'I have prevailed against him;' and those that trouble me rejoice when I am moved.'" You know, I'm so glad the Lord every now and then gives us a book because after all of this, he's saying, "How long, Lord? How long, you know, am I gonna have to wait? How long are you gonna forget me? How long, O Lord, am I, am I gonna hide my face? Are you going to hide your face from me? How long?" But then it gets to verse 5 and it says, "But I have trusted, hallelujah, in thy mercy; my heart shall rejoice in thy salvation. I will sing unto the Lord, because he hath dealt bountifully with me." Aren't you glad for a "but" today? Aren't you glad to know that the Lord... Sometimes we can have a pity party for a minute, but just take five seconds and come to yourself and remember that if he did it before, he will do it again. This God that we serve, this God that we glorify, he is yet with us through thick and thin. But even though sometimes it looks like we're in this world all by ourselves, even though it looks like sometimes we become depressed, suppressed, and oppressed, sometimes we look at this world and we say, "Lord, how long?" And God is saying, "Trust me. I am the author and finisher of your faith. I am the God which healed thee. I am the God that delivered the three Hebrew boys out of the fiery furnace. I am the same God that delivered Daniel in the lion's den. But if I trust him in thy mercy, my heart shall rejoice in thy salvation. And when it rejoices, then I can sing unto the Lord, because he hath dealt bountifully with me." Amen, amen, and amen. If we keep the faith, everything will be all right. Let us look this morning at verse, uh, chapter 14, Psalm 14. And this psalm is very, very familiar to all of us today. This is a psalm that we have heard, uh, the beginning of it, and many of us might have even repeated it or read it in our Bible study or in our time of maturing in the Lord and having a personal one-on-one with Him. These words are familiar and they say, "The fool hath said in his heart, 'There is no God.' They are corrupt; they have done abominable works; there is none that doeth good.'" It says, "the fool." Now, the Bible says we're not to call anyone a fool, so we're not calling anyone a fool. We're acknowledging that there are people with foolish behaviors. And when they have foolish behaviors, they come under the category of the fool. "The fool hath said in his heart, 'There is no God.' They are corrupt; they have done abominable works; and there is none that doeth good.'" "The Lord looked down from heaven upon the children of men to see if there were any that did understand and seek God." I mean, Psalm 14, beginning now, verse 3. "They are all gone aside; they are altogether become filthy. There is none that doeth good, no, not one. Have all the workers of iniquity no knowledge? Who eat up my people as they eat bread and call not upon the Lord? There were they in great fear; for God is the generation of the righteous. Ye have shamed the counsel of the poor; because the Lord is his refuge. Oh, that the salvation of Israel were come out of Zion! When the Lord bringeth back the captivity of his people, Jacob shall rejoice, and Israel shall be glad." You see, here the description of the depravity of human nature and the deplorable corruption of a great part of mankind. It starts by simply saying, "The fool." "The fool hath said in his heart, 'There is no God.'" The sinner here is described as an atheist because a person that does not believe in God is called an atheist. One that said, "There is no judge; there is no governor of the world; no providence ruling over the affairs of men." He says this in his heart, in his heart. He cannot satisfy himself that there is none, but wishes that there was one and pleases himself that it is possible that there may be none. He is willing to think there is no God. The sinner then is a fool. He is simple and unwise, and this is evident of him being wicked and profane. And this is the call. Amen? I want us to be conscientious today and to know that the word of God is a discerner of these thoughts. No man will say, "There is no God," till he is so hardened in his sin. And if he is hardened in his sin, then his heart is also hardened. It says that the disease of sin has infected our entire race, beloved, as a whole. It affects our entire race. And it says that, "There is no God," till, uh, I said, "our hearts are hardened." And there, the disease of sin affects everybody. Because when we have that in our hearts, it affects the way we talk, the way we walk, the way we live, the way we give, the way we don't give. It affects everything, where we go, what we do when we get there, how we treat our neighbors. It affects everything, sin. And it lets us know that, "They've all gone aside." "There is none that doeth good, no, not one." So whatever good is in any one... Believers, hear me today. Whatever good there is in any of us, it is not our doing. It is the work of God in our lives. Hallelujah, the work of God in our lives. Amen? Let us look now at our final chapter this morning, which is Psalm 15. "Lord, who shall abide in thy tabernacle? Who shall dwell in thy holy camp? He that walketh uprightly and worketh righteousness and speaketh the truth in his heart; he that backbiteth not with his tongue, nor doeth evil to his neighbor, nor taketh up a reproach against his neighbor, in whose eyes a vile person is contempt." A vile person. A vile person is a repulsive person. It's a despicable person. Uh, it is, that despicable person is contemned. And the word "contemned" means scorned, despised, unworthy. "But he honoreth them that fear the Lord; he that swereth to his own hurt and changes not; he that putteth not out his money to usury, nor taketh reward against the innocent; he that doeth these things shall never be moved. He that doeth these things shall never be moved." I want us to know today that the way to heaven, if we would be happy, we must be holy. The word of God says, "Holiness, without no man shall see the Lord." So in 2020, God is still looking for us to live holy because he is holy. We cannot live like the world. We're in the world, but not of the world. So we are a peculiar people that must live differently than the world. We are encouraged to walk in that way, the way of holiness. I want us to know that the Lord is, he will not increase his estate by exhortation or by bribery. He will not, for any gain or hope of it to himself, he will not do anything to hurt a righteous cause. Even true living, uh, members of the church, like the church itself, is built upon a rock. And he that doeth these things shall not be moved forever. The grace of God shall always be sufficient for him. The word of God tells us in Corinthians, "For my grace is sufficient and my strength is made perfect." I want us to be reminded. I want us to be reminded, reminded today. Psalm 15, verse 5. "He that puteth not out his money to usury, nor taketh reward against the innocent; he that doeth these things shall never be moved." We are to be in the Lord, and if we are to rejoice in the power of His might, we must be holy, live holy, walk holy, think holy. Amen? Because God is holy. Next week, I want us to be mindful that we are reading Psalms 16, 17, and 18. Amen? Psalm 16, 17, and 18. May God bless you this morning, those of you that are sick and shut in, those of you that have had surgery, those of you that are having surgery today or have had it. Our prayers are with each and every one of you. Do not doubt. I want you to be reminded that if God brings you to it, He'll take you through it. I want you to be reminded that we serve a God who never, ever fails. May God bless you. Put a smile on someone's face today by simply telling them, dear God loves you, and so do I. See you on Sunday, 11:00 AM, live.